Twenty-seventh meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor Janik?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor DiMedeiras?
Present.
Counselor Burke?
Present.
Counselor Milburn?
Present.
Bill Milburn, sorry.
All right, tonight we're gonna do a presentation by Melissa St. Lauren and the Four Legged Angels Hoops for Heroes in honor of Joe Perry. Full disclosure, I'm part of this committee. I'm one of the people that's helping Missy right now. Melissa, come on up. You can sit down, guys, if you're more comfortable.
What's that?
You can sit down.
Oh, sure.
And Danny can come see me. So Melissa, tell us a little bit about your organization to begin with, and I understand you have someone with you.
I do. First, I want to introduce, this is Charlie Young. He's actually the founder of Four Legged Angels. So I'm gonna give it off to him to start.
Thanks for having us tonight to come up here and talk a little bit about our program that we run. So I started, retired, I was law enforcement canine and a canine trainer. I retired five years ago. And I opened up a business called Professional Canine Services, which basically trains all types of dogs, comfort dogs for schools, basic obedience, stuff like that. And then I was at the point where I wasn't satisfied enough in my life because I was always in law enforcement, always want to help people, and I suffer from PTSD myself from the job. And I started the nonprofit called The Four Legged Angels. The Four Legged Angels was started to give veterans and first responders with PTSD or any type of underlying issue a companion dog, basically, or a service animal. So we came up with a slogan, "Save a Dog to Save a Life." So I get all my dogs from shelters, that last chance shelters, basically euthanization dogs. So I save them, I train them, and then I hand them off to veterans or first responders. Our whole program basically was founded because one day I was just like sitting here trying to think about, what about the guy that does 30 years on the job, right? Military guys do four, four years, five years. Sometimes they do 20, but what about the first responder as well? So I opened it up. I wasn't gonna be just pinpointing one avenue. I wanted to pinpoint, I wanted to open up. So when I meet my first responders, I meet by like healthcare workers, EMS, even public, in the school system, teachers, administrators, because they could go through critical incidents too at the school. So I wanted to open the whole program up. So we started this recently, and we hit the ground running with it. So our biggest piece of our program is, one, it's called "Save a Dog to Save a Life" because it's very important to us to save a dog from euthanization and save an individual that needs a dog. We do all types of training. We'll do just companion dogs. We will do therapy dogs. And we also will do service animals, which basically a service animal entails a lot more work. Those dogs range from anywhere between 20 to 50 to $100,000 dogs that will train somebody for stabilization, diabetic, somebody that has seizures, a dog that can take, turn lights on and off for somebody, retrieve cell phones if they drop it, and items. And we do all that for free. So our program is basically, it's all free for everybody that shows up. We give them a full supply backpack with all their needs. We give them food. We try to take care of their vet bills and everything else because obviously they don't have the money to do it. So that's basically where I came from, where I started from. Like I said, I was training in the state of Massachusetts. I was training over 180 police dogs in the state before I retired. I worked undercover for 11 years with the Massachusetts State Police Drug Unit Task Force with my dogs. I had three canines with me. And that's how I started the program. When I first retired, I had no idea what I was gonna do. I said, "Let's try, why don't I just go back to what I know?" Because I didn't know anything else. All I did was I went from college to be a police officer and to do, you know, narcotic work and stuff like that, and I had no other, I had no other trade. I had no other skills. So I started this program on my own, and then I started The Four Legged Angels. And how I hooked up with Melissa was actually trained her dog, one of her dogs, service dogs for her son. She was part of, she sat down one day, we do a demonstration before the end of the demo, the end of the dog's training. We show videos, we show videos of what my crew comes from. We're all retired canine guys, and most of them suffered from PTSD or some type of traumatic incident, all my guys that work for me. So Melissa came along, we showed the demo, and we were like, "Yeah, we're trying to start a nonprofit called The Four Legged Angels to help people." And she all of a sudden, and I was looking for fosters, and she stood up and goes, "I'll do it." So that same day, having known her for more than three hours, she took my dogs, and now she fosters out of my house. Without people like Melissa, this program couldn't be done because I can't, the dogs come up on different ranges. I don't have the access to get a dog overnight. I have, it has to be a month. And then we gotta drive down either Florida or another euthanization place to get the dogs and get them up here. So we have to vet check them. We quarantine them for 10 days. And then usually after I do that, then I hand them off to Melissa to start the foundation work on the environmental, the geographic, geographical location changes for the dogs, party training, and getting them ready for the training process with me. So with all that said, I'm gonna, Melissa is the head of The Four Legged Angels. She runs all my fundraising efforts. I don't know how I met her because I think she's an angel, I think she's an angel to me because I'm just, like I just said, I'm just a canine guy that trains dogs to try to help people. And then she came into my life and tried to help us out with this program, and it's been nothing but, we hit the ground running. Sometimes I have to pump the brakes on her because she's too fast.
Me too.
Because I can't keep, I can't keep up with her speed because I have a busy day with my dogs I train all day. But she has been fantastic, and she's the reason why I'm sitting in this seat right now is because of her. And I'm gonna let her talk about the next event that we're trying to have. Go ahead, Melissa.
Go ahead, Missy.
And one quick fun fact, what he didn't know that day during that first three hours of meeting is I'm also a first responder. I work the fire department, and I had suffered from PTSD and hadn't worked on the ambulance in two years. I was pretty much staying in my house, didn't go out much, gained some weight. It was kinda really tough on me. And then when these guys said that day about taking in dogs, I'm like, "Yeah, right now!" They're like, "Don't you have to check the husband, boo?" He's like, "Don't look at me." And that day, my life, I got my life back. I'm now out, I'm going around to places. I'm back on the ambulance. And I realized just what a critical piece that these dogs really do. So it's funny that he's always thanking me, but I'm thanking them because without them, I wouldn't be here tonight. I wouldn't be at these events. I wouldn't be taking these dogs out. They gave me a purpose and gave me, you know, just something to do every day, get my shoes on and get out of the house. Dogs don't want you to lay in bed and wait. They want food. They're gonna come, they're gonna bother you whether you like it or not. And I also have three of my own. So sometimes I take three of his, and I've got three of my own. They want to eat, they want to go, they want to go outside. So the program works. And I've watched some of the dogs that I've taken. He's actually given me the pleasure of going and meeting the veterans where he hands the dogs off, and then they follow me later, and they send me updates of how their life are doing. And it's just incredible watching like somebody's life who was like me and feeling closed off now be able to survive in this world. Just with COVID alone, we've all kinda got isolated, never mind going through the PTSD of critical incidents, losing people. So that day really took my life back, and that's why I'm on full speed. And I really pushed to, "Let's help as many as we can," and he thinks I'm crazy when I take three, but I'm like, "Hey, let's go. The more I can take, the more you can pass off." So to the fundraising, while we were preparing next year's fundraising events, we had decided to hold a first responder basketball game. And while I was doing that, I was, didn't know anything about basketball. So I reached out to Facebook and said, "Hey, I want to do a basketball event, but I know nothing." And my brother-in-law actually said to me, "Why not do it in honor of your cousin Joe?" So Joe Perry and my dad were first cousins. He is my second cousin. And I just said, "What a brilliant idea." I said, "This is great." So as Joe is dedicated to his community, family, and friends, Four Legged Angels will be hosting this basketball fundraiser in his honor, naming a dog after him and donating it to a veteran or first responder in need. The game will be held at the Tiverton High School on April 7th to 2024 at 3:00 p.m. Doors will open at 2:00 to meet and greet local area police comfort dogs. Tickets will be $15 for adults, $30 prepaid with a t-shirt, and $5 for children under 12. Any business or organization that wants to, would like to sponsor the event or donate can contact me personally at my 774-228-8940. We actually have tickets on sale now at the Route 177 Flea Market Snack Bar, classic pizza and graze ice cream.
And I have some right now.
Yes, we've got some for us. Non-Tiverton residents who are unable to go to the three locations can also contact me for tickets. Again, my name's Melissa St. Lauren, and my number is 774-228-8940. And I do want to thank my committee members as well because a lot of people stepped up for this and joined me, and we're hitting the ground running with this.
So let's name the committee members because I think they've done a lot. So it's Bob Turcot, his wife.
Paula.
Paula.
Bob Sidoma.
Bob Sidoma.
Jean.
Ooh. Yeah, I can't think of the names.
Amanda Carroll.
Uh, me.
Yourself. I don't think we're missing anybody.
Yeah, we are missing someone. Ed Savigny.
Ed, yes.
All right, so it's gonna be held at the Tiverton High School. I've already checked with Joan, the police and fire. We don't need anything extra there. There was no real improvement here. I just wanted the council to be part of this and know what's going on. We need volunteers. We need to sell tickets.
Lots of volunteers.
A lot. I've already gone to a couple of businesses.
I'm looking through all of you.
I've already gone to some businesses, and the outpouring's been unbelievable. They have definitely wanted to donate, put a sign up, and we're doing this for Joe, and I think he would love this. I think this is something he would love.
And the family has decided on a name, so it will be Junior.
Yep.
They had the choice of Joe Perry Jr., Joseph, and Junior it is.
The family's totally on board, and they're very honored.
Yes.
I've spoken to Brenda just this weekend. Any questions? Yes.
Just one. So I'm assuming cash is acceptable, but you also have a Venmo card. Is there a place we can write a check?
Yes, to Four Legged Angels, same thing. We do have 501(c)(3).
Perfect. Thank you.
And if anyone wants to just give me the donations, we're meeting again in December, so I'm getting donations now. I'll be at the door, and if any of you want to help.
Sure. I just had a question. Are you located Rhode Island, Mass?
We're in Massachusetts.
Massachusetts?
Yeah, we're in Massachusetts.
So all of those animals you've given out have been between Rhode Island and Massachusetts?
They can go anywhere. I have a guy up in Arizona right now dealing with getting him a dog. So whoever reaches out to us that's in need, I don't care what state it's in, we'll travel and give a dog. We have a dog going out December 22nd to a survivor of 9/11. He was on the bottom floor of 9/11. We're actually going to Ground Zero to pass off the dog to him there. So we're going to New York in a couple of weeks.
I think you all agree that this is quite the organization.
It sure is. I hope you get travel miles.
I have, it's a fun time for me.
How long have you been in existence?
So I've been, the nonprofit's been around for like five months, that's about it. But my business has been around for five years.
Okay, so in that five years, about how many dogs have you placed?
So I used to work with two nonprofits prior to that. I was actually giving them dogs. I was actually the trainer for nonprofits, and I said, "Why am I gonna start doing this and giving them to other people when I'm the one that really wants to do it? I'm the one doing the back work on the dog training." So right now, I have probably in total with the nonprofits that I've actually given dogs to, ourselves alone, since we opened up our first fundraiser, which is in Marshfield, right now we have 15.
Wow.
All right, I've done 72 dogs so far. That's 72 free dogs, free training, free vet bills, free everything. So the money, all the proceeds go to these guys and their dogs. So if somebody comes to me and says, "And the other thing they get too is boarding." So if they want to go away, you know how people can't afford the boarding, we'll actually take their dogs in and train them. We give them a harness, a vest, all the collars that they need, and we take care of them. We mandate that they come to in-service, I call it in-service training, in the same other police thing we used to do. So that way I can take care, I can make sure the dogs are all in good, and good, taken good care of. Because what happens is you don't know what's gonna happen. So I just don't hand dogs off and say, "Okay, good luck, have fun, and your dog's fully trained." What I do is I mandate that they come once a month to in-service training, which is basically on a Sunday. So in that, in that issue, when we do that, when we do that to these guys, we don't have to set up therapy sessions. They do them themselves. We kind of just sit back and watch people talk to each other, and then they network. And it kinda, guys don't want to walk, because I know I don't want to walk into a building and open a door and people stare at me while I walk in. It's more open. It's just an open area where we train dogs. But that's one of the things, we make sure that we, we have a good finger on the veteran, number one. So if he does, or the first responder does see him declining, and we start to see the dog's health declining, we can take the dog back. We have full reign of taking that dog back because we don't know what can happen, right? Everybody has issues, and some people just go the other way, and then we don't want the dog to suffer. So we take the dog back, and we'll place him with another veteran in need. And then we reach out to the VA hospitals, and we say, "Listen, this guy needs some help." I am by far a therapist. I have no idea what to do about it. I know that I've seen him before because of my PTSD, but I don't, I sent him in the right direction. And sometimes it's not even about that. They just want somebody to sit down with and talk to. I mean, that's what it comes down to. But yeah, we've done a lot, we've done a lot of dogs. And our organization tries to keep these people so they stay with, they don't leave us. Once they're with us, they're part, I told them they're part of our family. They can come there anytime they want. Like, they don't need to make an appointment. You can come in and hang out in the office, sit down, have a cup of coffee, put your dog out in the kennel, hang out, watch TV. So they know when you're sitting alone by yourself all the time, it's crippling the people. And the more and more you sit alone, the worse and worse it gets to come out that front door again. So we make it full access to them. But yeah, we do, we did a lot of dogs last year. And sometimes I get dogs that donate it to us. Like, some people will say, "Listen, I have eight labs. I couldn't get rid of three of them. Will you take them?" And I'm like, "Absolutely. I'm not gonna pass up a dog because I'll take it," you know, "to try to train them for the veteran or the first responder."
I think I'm at like number 10 dog with you.
Yeah, so I just shuffle dogs to her.
July.
Any other questions? All right, so I hope everyone out there will support this organization. The gym carries 678 people?
688.
688, so we want to fill it. And with the enthusiasm I'm already getting from people, I think we will fill it. If you don't want to go, but you still want to donate, just call us. Thank you, Missy. You did a really good job.
I'd like to thank you both for having us here. Thank you.
Thank you so much for doing this.
Good luck.
Thank you. I love you all there.
Bye, Danny.
You know how he said, "I approached him. I'm coming through yet soon."
Bye, Danny.
He says bye.
Okay.
He'd stay with you all night if I left.
I know. All right, moving on. I seem to have dogs at meetings all the time now. I like that. All right.
Not a bad trend.
No, it isn't. Consent agenda, acknowledged receipt of minutes from boards, commissions, and committees, Economic Development Commission Two, Zoning Revision Committee Two, acknowledged receipts and reports from Treasurer Sherratt, October 2023, three budget and revenue reports, acknowledged receipt of correspondence letter from Joe Perry, 28 Robert Gray Avenue recommending Blake Hayden for town council seat, approval of license renewals not advertised, December 1st, 2023 to November 30th, 2024, see attached list for tobacco dealers, Victorin licensing, holiday, and antique. When the council like to take anything out of the consent agenda. Mike?
4D1.
4D1, the tobacco license?
Well, this is vicshuline, but it's that.
Okay.
It's that group.
Okay.
4D holiday.
All right.
Madam President?
Yes.
4B1.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. I'll do 4B1 first. John?
Wonderful. So a couple of questions, just going through the revenue numbers. As the treasurer stated at the beginning, we're up to 31.35% collected year-to-date. I have a question around, and perhaps, I don't see the treasurer here. But perhaps the administrator can weigh in. So a couple of questions here. So Tiverton Power Associates, what's the timing of those payments? Like, when do we typically receive them?
I do know that they make a bulk payment. I don't know when they make it, but it does come in at one time.
Okay. I'm just curious, I just want to make sure, because again, that's showing at 25%. So I'm assuming by the time we get the next one of these, that'll be at 50%.
Well, don't forget, the reason why they will be at 25% anyhow is we forgave three months of the year. We pushed the tax collection till September.
That included pilot payments?
Yep. Your entire tax payment. So it'll, the money will be there by June 30th. I'm not worried about that.
Okay. Obviously, along those lines was tax receipts showing at 29%. So that, there's a bit of a lag there. What is the timing on the mooring fees?
So I'm waiting on Tyler to get back to me on how that software is working because I think that's the problem, the actual implementation of that software product. So they are working through some bugs with that, but we're expecting to get both years caught up. They are gonna be delayed.
That came up at the Harvard Commission meeting, and they were delayed in its starting, which has delayed them getting all the fees. And what we, what they talked about is that the, as he's sending out the letters, because the renewals start December 15th, I think. So as he's sending out those letters, he's also sending out reminders and saying, "Well, you don't get a renewal until you pay what you owe this year."
Yeah, that one just concerned me because it's hanging out there at 0%.
I've been trying to get ahold of Tyler to deal with that.
All right, that was it. Thank you. Motion to approve 4B1.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Mike?
This is related to, and it's really a question, it's a jar of my memory, I guess. Too many pieces of paper.
I know.
This is related to the sports kitchen vicshuline license at Longplex. So on the map that he provided for his liquor license renewal, he wrote, "Will be serving on first floor only. Shaded areas already sports kitchen vicshuline license." Which, these floor plans still are confusing. So did we, I thought, I know we approved the liquor license for right downstairs below the sports kitchen. Did we already approve vicshuline for down there, or is the vicshuline limited to upstairs?
He can only serve wine and beer downstairs.
That's for liquor. This is for food service.
But there is for food service downstairs. Yeah.
Madam President?
Motion to approve.
Oh, before the motion, just one thing to add. It would be nice if Mr. Long would ask for the liquor license for the whole building as somebody who brings a child to dance class, which is on the third floor. Just putting it out there.
Well, he hasn't done that yet.
That's why I'm saying it publicly.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Just to be clear, this is just for 4D vicshuline licenses?
Yes, that's all that's for. Thank you. All those in favor? At this time.
We still have holiday licenses to give.
Oh.
Yeah, Counselor Edwards.
Oh, Danny?
Yep.
Oh, you didn't, did you? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jack.
But I didn't yell at you.
I didn't hear you.
All right, so my comments are specifically for the Dollar General located on Stafford Road, the liaison to the litter committee, and the litter committee has been having a recurring and continual battle with them about paper litter on the premises and blowing off the premises. And I just wanted to be known that they're responsible for that.
So what can we do?
I don't know that we can do anything.
I'm asking.
I guess this is using a public forum to tell them it's not just the litter committee not watching you.
No, I have to tell you that I live right near there, and the trash is unbelievable.
It is.
So I think the council should be, through the administrator's office, should be sending a letter basically saying that we've got complaints about trash. The litter committee has mentioned it and that it came up during the renewal of your holiday sales license. So just to put them on notice that they expect it to clean, they're expected to clean their premises.
I need a motion for that?
I just, like, where does it come from? Is it dumpsters or?
I think their trash gets like overflowing, and they don't empty it.
They don't empty it entirely.
There is to be no real manager on premises. I had buddies who talked to them, get a resolve.
Well, they have trash cans here and there.
So if you walk out, you throw your trash?
But the other day, I just happened to notice this. I was driving on Stafford Road, and there was trash blowing from there.
It's a mess.
All right, so your motion would be to have the town council direct the town administrator to send a letter to them notifying of the complaints we're getting about their trash?
Be sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Grab a second. Motion been made in second. Any further discussion?
Does that motion include approving the licenses?
Well, I was gonna do that afterwards.
Okay.
Is that all right? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? All right, now, John, go for it. A motion to approve all the licenses.
He's the one who pulled it, so he should probably make the motion.
4D holiday license renewals.
And tobacco, and remaining licenses.
Yeah, I pulled all 4D.
Oh, you pulled? Okay.
So I need a motion to approve 4D.
4D is all. Motion to approve 4D is all.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Thank you. All right, public comments, do I have any? Okay. At this, at this time, I'd like to bring an item forward. I'd like to bring 8G forward, the town council position. I know that everyone's here anticipating who we're gonna choose, and I don't want the candidates to be in the audience waiting forever for this. Do I have a sec?
Second.
Without objection, we approve it. Without objection?
Without objection, I can just move it up. I don't need a motion. Okay. I don't need a motion.
Oh, okay.
All right, so this is how we're gonna do it, and I think I explained it last time. I'm gonna go through all of us, and I'm gonna ask for a nomination. If the same, if the same person you're thinking of has already been nominated, please don't nominate. I don't need a second for these nominations. Once I get all the nominations, I will open it up to discussion. So the people that are nominated can give their opinion on why. And of course, the rest of the council can also interject. After, after that's all done, I will close discussion, and then I'll do a roll call vote. So I'll go through all six of us and just name the person that has been nominated that you select. If we get three nominations, the lowest nomination will be dropped, and we'll have a re-nomination. At any point, people can change their vote. So after I get, after I get everyone's vote, I will ask if anyone wants to change. Does that seem fair to everyone and appropriate?
Four votes to, four votes.
Yeah, four votes are required. So, yes.
Madam President?
Mitchell Vero here?
Yes, I'm gonna do that. That's my, yes, I'm gonna do that now. I just wanted to make sure everyone gets it. Once we appoint the nominee, they will not be sworn in until the December 11th meeting, which is the next scheduled meeting, and that's per charter. We were hoping to do it a little sooner, but the charter said we have to do it at the next meeting. Next regular meeting. So that would be December 11th. All right, so we interviewed five. Is Mitchell Vero here? Vero here? Someone just told.
I don't see him.
Okay, so Mitchell did apply, but he hasn't shown up twice. He was notified. So he is not part of the running, which I, does anyone have any objections to that?
I thought that decision was made last meeting.
Well, I, we decided to be fair to see if he did show up. I feel if you can't show up to the interview, you certainly can't come to the several meetings we have weekly. So, okay, so I'm gonna open up the floor for nominations. I'll start at John.
David Perry?
David Paul?
Jay?
Steve Clark?
Anyone else?
No.
I'll open up the floor for discussion. Go ahead.
Madam President, all right. So really quickly, I think we had a lot of qualified candidates that came forward. I will say that, given his involvement, both on the council, then on the budget committee, the ability to hit the ground running, I think out of all the candidates, former counselor Perry makes the most sense to be able to get up to speed very quickly. And I just wanted to add that, you know, while we had this discussion about the charter and the language and the charter review commission, you know, I think it's pretty obvious, as we've seen over the years in the town of Tiverton, that the charter's not perfect. For the longest time, we would hold, you know, budget elections, even if there was only a single. only a single budget on the docket. So, you know, while I understand what the specific language of the charter says, and yes, we're going to follow that process, I don't think that what was put forward and what the intention of that Charter Review Commission, Committee is, is for us to sit in an appointment seat. And for anybody who cast a write-in ballot, whether it be for former Councilor Perry or, you know, David Paul or anybody else, you know, to have those votes thrown out and invalidated, I think is the antithesis of functioning democracy. So, you know, beyond the fact that David Perry is eminently qualified to fill the position, and before, I acknowledge that, Mike, so you don't have to pull the charter out. Okay.
Just reviewing, Charles.
All right. I'm going to ask you what that is in a second. So beyond the fact that David Paul is eminently qualified to fill the role and can hit the ground running immediately, because he's been involved both as a counselor and on the Budget Committee and is familiar with all the stuff that's going on in town, you know, I think that it's incumbent upon us in a democracy in this country to count every single vote. So as somebody who, as, as many of our constituents went out and there was 200 and something unique write-in votes, those have a place and those should be honored.
All right. I forgot to say something before. I do want to thank every single one of you that came forward and did this. This is a really hard job, and to have you say that you would be dedicated enough to do this, I really, really appreciate that. And whoever doesn't get it tonight, please continue your service. Please keep your interest and run if, if you really want to in November, because last year there was only seven of us running for seven positions, which I have to tell you was a really boring election for me. So I think the more competition, the more voices out there, the more people have choices is really important. We've had problems getting volunteers, and I'm starting to see an upswing, which is making me thrilled. So I want to thank everybody for what you've done and for applying.
Deb. You took the words right out of my mouth. This is, this has been the hardest decision of my council years. I think that my fellow counselors would say the same. We had very qualified people, and I think every one of you is valued, and I really hope that you stay in the race, so to speak. We are in very trying times. We have some items before us now. We have items that are coming up. We have items that will be coming up in the next few months, and they really dramatically can change the course of the history of Tiverton. So they're really important, and we need to get it right. We need to be able to have somebody that doesn't have a learning curve. Somebody has to really hit the ground running. So I did, I looked at everyone and pros and cons. David Paul has been attending council meetings, not just since we had a vacancy in this seat, but for all of the years that I've been on the council, now like three years on the council, he has a good working knowledge of what all of the committees do, how the departments interact, and that's really, really important because we can't just sit up here and say, I like this or I don't like that, because you have to look at the ramifications for every single decision you make. And it's, you have to go with the ordinances and the laws and how it will impact all of the other departments and committees. So I looked at that and also the chemistry of our council right now, and I think that David would fit in well, my personal choice. I think he checks all the boxes, so my thoughts. Thank you. Jay.
Well, I will make a comment to start with what the charter says. I don't think I want to be in the business of interpreting the charter. It's in black and white, what it says, what it means. If anybody disagrees with it, there is a mechanism to make changes, and that's called a charter review. And we asked for candidates to join us in a charter review, and we got no response. It sounds like there are a lot of people that think there needs to be some changes. And I invite you to either join the charter review group when and if we can ever get it going. And if you don't want to do that, at least submit what you want a change to be, and they have to be considered, and then we'll decide whether they're good or bad. And this is probably, to my mind, this is one of them. What do we do about write-in votes? What do we do if Mickey Mouse gets 50? Do we search for Mickey Mouse? It's ridiculous. So that's all I'm going to say about that. Steve Clark, granted, he only did a year. He was brought in at a very trying time for the town council in Tiverton. Most of you are aware of what went on during that time. At the same time, COVID hit. So everybody was, it was just, it could have been a disaster. It turned out well in the end. Everybody did a good job. I think he did his part. I think he'll fit, and I think he'll do his best to do, do right by the town.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Just to the suggestion that by not choosing someone who was a writing candidate, we're being somehow anti-democratic. I would agree with Councilor Edwards, Jay, that the charter is very clear. It has to be a qualified candidate for us to almost automatically put them in that, in a open council position. Not a qualified candidate is a person who declared, got the signatures that were needed to, and were on the ballot as a candidate. So for example, if we had had eight candidates on the ballot last year, and, you know, let's, let's say Donna was number eight in terms of votes, it probably would have been higher, but, and we had this opening when Donna says, "No, I'm not interested this time. I'm fine with my retirement. I'm not interested." And there were two, two or three other writing candidates. We can't go to that list, not automatically. Doesn't mean we can't take that into consideration individually, but that list is, the list is exhausted in that example once we ask Donna if she's interested. If she were interested, she'd be appointed. If she weren't, she wouldn't be. Thank you.
Dennis, anything? I do want to say that this all came about at the last charter review, because I don't know if some of you remember this, but the last charter stated that it doesn't matter who came in eighth. The town council would appoint him. And the town, at that time, the charter review said, "Well, I think if they're valid candidates and they're qualified, they should get the position." And that's, it got changed. So it was even a little bit more controversy back then. People did write in votes, but people did also vote for this charter. And this charter was reviewed by the citizens, and it became a charter because it was the majority of the voters. So as far as 256 people writing in write-ins, that's correct, but the two top candidates only got a little more than 30. So I don't want anyone to feel that the top candidate got over 200. That, that's not true. All the write-in candidates came out to over 200. And let me tell you, in my past experience, Donald Duck has won once. Mickey Mouse won once. Winnie the Pooh won once. So people, you know, do that. They just put in anyone's name. And they put in names that, of people that aren't even interested, because for other positions, such as the Budget Committee, write-ins do count. And we've gone through a whole write-in, like we've gone through 10 write-ins, and the people have said, "No, we don't want it. We didn't even know they wrote our name." So that's why this is changed for town council. All right. Any other discussion? So we're going to close nominations. I'm going to close discussion, and I will do a roll call. At that time, just, I'm going to keep talking this. Name the person that you would like to be the next town councilor. John?
David Perry.
Deb? David Paul.
Jay?
Steve Clark.
Mike?
David Paul.
Dennis?
David Perry.
And I say David Paul. So Steve Clark is automatically...
No, no. Mr. Clark is under our rules because he only, one vote, he will be dropped off, and has no candidate received four votes. You have to do it again.
Okay. Is that all right with everyone?
It's what we're doing.
All right.
David Perry. Keep track.
Oh, don't mind. I'm keeping track too. Deb?
David Paul.
Jay?
David Paul.
David Paul?
Dennis?
David Perry.
And I say David Paul. David Paul's our new town councilor. Congratulations, Dave. I'm going to take about a five-minute recess, and then we'll continue. I'm going to take about a five minute recess and then we'll continue. I'm going to take about a five minute recess and then we'll continue.
I've reached out to all 39. I've made 14 presentations myself. Two other staff members have made presentations on my behalf. And two other municipalities without a presentation have moved forward with creating their ad hoc committees. So we're almost there, but we're not.
So all of those other ones already committed?
So all the ones that I have presented to have committed and are exploring with their administrative staff. And I'm always here to answer any questions and provide support for them when they need it.
And just so you know, this is not on for a vote tonight, so we won't be able to make any commitment tonight. But interesting little factoid that I learned recently because a friend of mine, an old neighbor, moved to Florida and sent me a book on a murder that happened in Tiverton in 1830 something. And he said it was on the Durfee Farm supposedly near where I live. But I learned that Tiverton up until 1862 extended up to almost Columbia Avenue and Fall River. So for those who are around from around here, yeah, it did. So the Durfee Farm was where Lincoln.
So Sanian's Hospital was in Tiverton.
Yeah. So Durfee Farm is where Kennedy Park is.
Yeah.
At one time, Tiverton and Little Compton were both product masters.
I didn't know that. Yeah. And that's why some of the birth certificates, Nancy Mello had told me some of the birth certificates have mass on them in some Rhode Island because they were home births.
But the, what was it? Oh, I lost it. No, that's okay. That was a, I put that out there intentionally. Oh, and just some thoughts that I had and not having approached any of the chairs of any of these committees, town commissions. But I think it could fit in well with our historic preservation.
Yes, absolutely.
Committee, commission, our open space commission because they manage the civil or Revolutionary War readout. Recreation Commission and, you know, perhaps Stu's listening somewhere, I'm sure. It could be a theme for our parade for Tiverton celebrates. Certainly the school district and the library as well, so.
Yes, you bring up a good point. I forgot to mention with Councilman Edwards, a lot of the municipalities have been leaning on these historical organizations that are very aware of this milestone, this national milestone, and very much looking forward to programming, creating programming for this milestone as well. So it's definitely a great option in the lieu of budget restrictions.
Anyone else? Okay, I want to thank you. I'll put it on the next agenda to see if we would like to form a committee and get volunteers. Thank you. Thank you very much.
One quick question. How many people have the other communities put on their committees generally?
So.
Communities more our size.
So I believe that Warren has put out an ad for five members. We're really leaving it up to the municipality just based on sheer numbers and their experience. I know that Little Compton's well versed in these kind of celebrations, especially with their 350th coming up. So again, we're really leaving it up to them. The highest I've heard was about 15, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, I want to thank you. I'll put it on the next agenda to see if we would like to form a committee and get volunteers. Thank you. Thank you very much.
One quick question. How many people have the other communities put on their committees generally?
So.
Communities more our size.
So I believe that Warren has put out an ad for five members. We're really leaving it up to the municipality just based on sheer numbers and their experience. I know that Little Compton's well versed in these kind of celebrations, especially with their 350th coming up. So again, we're really leaving it up to them. The highest I've heard was about 15, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know where we are. Public hearings advertised. Discussion impossible votes subject to meeting all legal requirements. Pinehouse Kitchen and Bar, Inc., DBA Pinehouse Kitchen, 13 Crandall Road. Request approval of transfer of Class BV liquor license from Susan's Incorporated, DBA Wally's Tap House Liquor - 23-26. Our representatives here from Pinehouse, come on up. You guys can sit right there. I'm kind of excited you're opening this.
Well, I'm the Wally's. He's the new guy. I'm excited.
So tell us a little bit about Pinehouse.
So, I mean, I've been in the restaurant industry for about, since I was 12 years old. I'm 31 years old now. So I started off with, you know, doing a lot of pastries and things like that and all in the sweet kitchen. Learned all about that. And then I actually had shoulder surgery in both sides and then had to elaborate more menus and things like that. And then I got into the hot kitchen. So I started doing more of the hot kitchen and then I actually learned how to do breads as well. So breads, pastries, and all that good stuff. And then I did catering when I was 12 years old and then worked in a pizza place parallel to going to high school. And then after that, I just, you know, took off everything, cooking for family, making people different recipes, partying and catering weddings. Instead of going on, you know, the weekends and things like that, I was catering weddings till 1:00, 2:00 in the morning in high school. So that was where I started off my restaurant career. And now at Pinehouse, I finally found the right location, the building.
It's a beautiful place.
Plenty of parking, everything. Everything got me really excited. So I kind of got a little bit down after COVID hit and then I was kind of, you know, saying, ah, if the restaurant shows up, then I'll, you know, venture off and do it. And then this actually came upon, I was, you know, just researching around and I actually came upon this building. Contacted him on Facebook, said, hey, you selling it? And then it just all went down from there and we've been progressing and I'm really excited, you know, making menus and getting my staff ready to go and things like that. So we're going to do, you know, all fresh food, so pretty much everything from scratch. So we'll have a lot of specials going on, some different appetizers with some, a lot of local seafood, some meats, things like that, some obviously the good chicken wings. And then burgers as well, craft burgers, pizzas as well. So I'll do that as well. And then also a lot of homemade desserts. We're going to really specialize in desserts as well. You'll be able to potentially have some cakes made and things like that for parties. And, you know, really venture off in that. I have a sister as well that's a pastry chef. So she studied at Johnson &amp; Wales out in actually Miami. So she brushed up on her skills and she's super excited too. So we've been making a lot of different menus and things like that, a lot of desserts and getting pretty excited about everything, yeah.
Any questions? Jesus.
Unreal. Do you want to do a public hearing first before the council?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no, no. I just wanted, no, I want to do questions for myself and I'll do the public hearing.
Okay. Just a couple. So on the applicant page here, it says like State Incorporated, a couple of points where it's, it says RH instead of RI. Just want to make sure that's not an official document that we need to have that corrected, Madam Clark.
This is the application. This is the information that was keyed and we can correct it.
Okay, please do. And then secondly, I would just say that I'm glad to hear that you have some back of the house experience because as somebody who's worked in the restaurant business for 12 years myself, if you haven't worked in the front or the back of the house, you have no clue how people are going to steal from you. So I wish you all the best.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Absolutely.
Come on, Mike.
A question not necessarily for you. It's a process question. So this is a transfer. And Wally's license ends November 30th?
Remember we discussed this?
So we can only approve the transfer to that date. So they need to come back before us. You would need to come back before us to renew it.
For you. You get that?
Which doesn't give you much time because we don't meet again until December 11th. So when were you planning on opening?
So right now it's, it's holding up a little bit, this and then also the food beverage license because I need to send that in. And we're just changing the septic tank. So we're changing the numbers on there to what that was. So I need to send that in. But we had planned on giving me the keys on the 24th of December.
Okay.
So right after.
So you'll have time. You'll have time. I just didn't want you to lose your business time, but that's the formality. We can only approve the transfer. Yeah, yeah.
No, what Mike is concerned.
Transfer to the end of this month.
Right.
You have to come back to us. So fill it out pretty quickly. Once you get all your business done between the two of you to come back for your full year license.
Okay.
Because licenses always expire in November.
Okay.
What Mike was concerned about it was you were going to open between that period, November 30th and December, and our next meeting. But it doesn't sound like that that would be a problem. That's, that's perfect.
That for both that and I know we aren't on a victual and victual thing will be the same.
Yes. Okay, perfect. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Madam President, just to follow up on Counselor Burke's line of questioning. What actually happens? Because November 30th, the license is going to expire. So is this like other communities where it just disappears and now it's a new BV application? Or is it still a renewal within a grace period?
It's still a renewal.
It's not totally new.
So he can renew. He can put his renewal in tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, you can just put it in tomorrow to renew it.
So. Put the renewal in sooner rather than later.
It might have been better to just have his expire and he can reply, but it's whatever it is.
No, because then he'd lose the license completely. Then it goes away. They're doing it the right way.
Did you guys know how I got that?
How?
When I, we first had the beer and wine, which everybody gets.
I think I remember this.
Yeah. And then I was in the office over there and I said, hey, can I have an application for a full liquor license? And I forget who the lady was. She said, there's no more. I said, well, a copy machine makes them. But I didn't know there was no more. There was only a certain amount of time as I was new with it. So she said, would you like the opportunity to ask you guys to do it?
Right. And we increased, we expanded.
Because I said, so.
I remember this.
It was 1977. They said, you was kidding. Don't you think the town's grown a little bit?
Yes. And you're right. And we increased it by so many.
Me and my wife a year, you know, with the state.
Right, with everything together, yeah. Joan? Yeah, I'm always here. Joan.
Just a question because this also applies to the victualing and the entertainment license. So it's going to take a period of time to get all the legal requirements met, which will be after the renewal date. So in effect, we would be actually issuing like a new license for victualing and entertainment.
But not liquor.
And we can't do the same with liquor because they're not, all the paperwork's not going to be completed for the transfer until after.
License, so.
I ain't doing that because we're going to run into a problem, right?
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, not as long as no one else. Is there anyone on a waiting list for liquor?
No, we have plenty of licenses.
Yeah, it'll be fine. It'll be fine.
You sure?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it was increased to 30.
It was increased to 30 and we don't have 30. Yeah, there's available licenses. You made us increase it to 30.
But get it in as quickly as you can because we have to advertise it. How many for how many? Yeah. Because how long do we have to advertise it for?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
So we'll come back to your office tomorrow, right?
Yep, you could.
So, yeah, it was the first thing I just did on, pretty much on the new portal system. Just fill that out again. Just fill it out right again.
You can do the same thing.
Okay.
Joan has a copy machine.
So we'll have a lot of specials going on, some different appetizers with some, a lot of local seafood, some meats, things like that, some obviously the good chicken wings. And then burgers as well, craft burgers, pizzas as well. So I'll do that as well. And then also a lot of homemade desserts. We're gonna, um, really specialize in desserts as well. You'd be able to potentially have some cakes made and things like that for parties. And, um, you know, really venture off in that. I have a sister as well that's a pastry chef. So she studied at Johnson &amp; Wales, um, out in actually Miami. So she brushed up on her skills and she's super excited too. So we've been making a lot of different menus and, and things like that, a lot of desserts and, uh, getting pretty excited about everything, yeah.
Any questions? Jesus.
Unreal. Do you want to do a public hearing first before the council?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, 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 I just wanted, no, I want to do questions for myself and I'll do the public hearing.
Okay. Just a couple. So on the applicant, um, page here, it says like state incorporated, a couple of points where it's, it says RH instead of RI. Just want to make sure that's not an official document that we need to have that corrected, Madam Clerk.
This is the application. This is the information that was keyed and we can correct it.
Okay, please do. Um, and then secondly, uh, I would just say that I'm glad to hear that you have some back of the house experience because as somebody who's worked in the restaurant business for 12 years myself, if you haven't worked in the front or the back of the house, you have no clue how people are gonna steal from you. So I wish you all the best.
Thank you, I appreciate it, absolutely.
Uh, Mike?
Uh, question not necessarily for you, it's a process question. So this is a transfer and Wally's license ends November 30th?
Remember we discussed this?
So we can only approve the transfer to that date. So they need to come back before us. You would need to come back before us to renew it.
For you.
Okay.
You get that?
Which doesn't give you much time because we don't meet again until December 11th. So when were you planning on opening?
So right now it's, um, it's holding up a little bit, this and then also the food beverage license because I need to send that in and we're just, uh, changing the septic tank. So we're changing the numbers on there to what that was, so I need to send that in. But we had planned on giving me the keys on the 24th of December.
Okay.
So right after.
So you'll have time, you'll have time. I just didn't want you to lose your business time, but that's the formality. We can only approve the transfer. Yeah, yeah.
No, what Mike is concerned.
Transfer to the end of this month. And then you have to come back to us, so fill it out pretty quickly. Once you get all your business done between the two of you to come back for your full year license.
Okay.
Because licenses always expire in November.
Okay.
What Mike was concerned about it was you were gonna open between that period, November 30th and December, and our next meeting, but it doesn't sound like that that would be a problem. That's, that's perfect.
That for both that and I know we aren't on a, the victual and, uh, victual name will be the same.
Yes, okay, perfect, yeah.
Any other questions?
Madam President, just to follow up on Counselor Burke's line of questioning. What actually happens? Because November 30th, the license is gonna expire. So is this like other communities where it just disappears and now it's a new BV application? Or is it a, still a renewal within a grace period?
It's still a renewal.
If you vote to transfer tonight, as of tonight, the liquor license transfers from Wally's to this gentleman.
Yep, and then it expires in.
It expires November 30th and you'll have to just reapply.
Okay. He has to reapply, so that's a, but that's a, that would be technically a new application.
Not reapply, you just have to re, re, renew it, basically.
Renew it, yeah. It's not reapply.
It's not totally new.
So he can renew, he can put his renewal in tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, you can just put it in tomorrow to renew it.
All right, so. Put the renewal in sooner rather than later.
It might have been better to just have his expire and he can reply, but it's whatever it is.
No, because then he'd lose the license completely. Then it goes away. They're doing it the right way.
Did you guys know how I got that?
How?
When I, we first had the beer and wine, which everybody gets.
I think I remember this.
Yeah. And then I was in the office over there and I said, hey, can I have an application for a full liquor license? And I forget who the lady was, she said, there's no more. I said, well, a copy machine makes them. So she said, would you like the opportunity to ask you guys to do it?
Right, and we increased, we expanded it.
Because I said, so.
I remember this.
It was 1977, they said, you was kidding, don't you think the town's grown a little bit?
Yes, and you're right, and we increased it by so many.
Me and my wife a year, you know, with the state.
Right, with everything to get it, yeah. Joan? Yeah, I'm always here, Joan.
Just a question, uh, because this also applies to the victualing and the entertainment license. So it's gonna take a period of time to get all the, uh, legal requirements met, which will be after the renewal date. So in effect, we would be actually issuing like a new license for victualing and entertainment.
But not liquor.
And we can't do the same with liquor? Because they're not, the, all the paperwork's not gonna be completed for the transfer until after.
License, so.
I ain't doing that because we're gonna run into a problem, right?
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, not, as long as no one else, is there anyone on a waiting list for liquor?
No, we have plenty of licenses.
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Okay.
It'll be fine.
You sure?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it was increased to 30.
It was increased to 30 and we don't have 30.
Right.
Yeah, there's available licenses. You made us increase it to 30.
But get it in as quickly as you can because we have to advertise it. How many, for how many? Yeah. Because how long do we have to advertise it for?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
So we'll come back to your office tomorrow, right?
Yep, you could.
So yeah, it was just, it was the first thing I just did on, pretty much on the new portal system. Just fill that out again. Just fill it out right again.
You can do the same thing.
Okay.
Joan has a copy machine.
So if there's no further discussion, um. Yeah, I know. I'd open up the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this subject? I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the requested transfer of the Class BV liquor license from Susan's Incorporated, DBA Wally's Tap House to Pinehouse Kitchen and Bar, DBA Pinehouse Kitchen for 13 Crandall Road.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor? Stay where you are. Joan, the only thing I'm, I'm gonna, I'm concerned with, if we request approval of victuring an entertainment license, if we make a motion to do that, um, meeting all legal requirements, would, they wouldn't have to reapply for that? As long as they give you all the legal requirements?
I'm saying that we probably won't have all the legal requirements met. So, and this is actually, the victuling and entertainment is applying for a new license.
Right, so if we approve it, but just put, um, as long as they meet all legal requirements, they don't have to come back for the victuring, okay? Okay. All right, so any questions?
No, just good luck.
Thank you so much.
Entertain the motion.
So exciting.
You know something, he's gonna bring it up to the next level.
Yeah.
Move approval of, um, the victuling license and entertainment license for Pinehouse Kitchen and Bar, Inc. Doing business as Pinehouse Kitchen, 13 Crandall Road.
Motion being made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Pleasure meeting all yous.
We'll see you again soon.
Yeah, we'll be there. Advertise public hearings for license and renewals, December 1st, 2023 to November 30th, 2024. I'm gonna go through each section, I'm not gonna read them, I'm just gonna put as listed. So, no, I'm gonna do 7B first, Jug Yard in second, Hand Dealers, as listed. Any of the councilor have any questions regarding these five? I'm gonna open up the public hearing. I probably need to read them though for the public hearing.
Yeah, you should.
So this is Arnold's Auto Pots, 1484 Crandall Road, General Auto Recycling, Inc., 384 King Road, Legas, Legasi Salvage Yard, 20 Cory's Lane, Tiverton Auto Pots, Inc., 541 Bookermash Road, and Sanford and Son, LTD, 104 Cynthia Avenue. The public hearing is open, do I have anyone who would like to comment on this, these five? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, a motion that we approve items B 1 through 5.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Liquor license renewals, Class A liquor stores, Crossroad Liquor, 1540 Bookermash Road, Stonebridge Liquor, 2490 Main Road, Tiverton Liquor, 75 Main Road.
65.
65, sorry. I'd like to open the public hearing, does anyone like to comment on these three? I'll close the public hearing, ask for the council comment if any.
Madam Chair, a motion to approve, uh, items 7C 1 through 3.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Class BC Casino, Bally's Tiverton Casino and Hotel, 777 Casino Boulevard. I'd like to open up the public hearing, anyone have anything, um, to say regarding this license? I'll close the public hearing and, and. Um, I'll close the public hearing, any discussion from the council?
Madam President.
Counselor Burke?
So, um, I didn't notice, and some of the floor plans were hard to, to read, but were any of these involving outdoor seating that we need to consider separately?
Nope, um, well, some of the others, but I haven't gotten those yet.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm just doing the casino right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
No, that's, that's, that's okay. Kim's saying no, there's no outside seating.
Madam Chair, a motion to approve Class BC for the casino.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion being made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. This as well. Class B full liquor license. Black Goose Cafe, 2160 Main Road, Evelyn's Nana Quarka Drive-In, 2335 Main Road, Atlantic Sports Bar Restaurant, 70 Show Street, Locals Burger and Cocktails, 4 Stafford Road, McCray's Seafood, 115 Stafford Road, The Boathouse Restaurant, 227 Shuna Drive, Riptide Sports Grill Incorporated, 1 Bay Street, Sakana River Grill, 524 Main Road, Barcello's Family Restaurant, 1214 Stafford Road, Spring Restaurant, 8, 118-120 Main Road, Moulin Rouge, 1403 Main Road, The Red Dory, 1848 Main Road, Family Ties, 221 Main Road, Sports LLC, 300 Industrial Way, Four Corners Grill, 3841. And this is what Mike was referring to. So, there is no outdoor liquor license here in Tiverton. We did in 2018 grant five permission to do it. Then COVID happened. We were supposed to go back to it and then the state said that everyone could have outdoor liquor. Not, they can serve it, they, they can bring it to your table from a waitress, but you can't have a bar outside. This, the state, this'll go on till April. After that, we have a problem. Black Goose Cafe, Evelyn's, um, Red Dory, The Boathouse. No, McCray's was not granted.
Oh, okay.
There was one more, Mike, what was the other one? Black Goose, Evelyn's.
Four Corners Grill?
No. Nope.
Black Goose BH, it used to be a little bit.
Little Bear, that was the one, okay. So these four were granted the temporary.
Uh, it was Black Goose, The Boathouse, Coastal Roasters, Evelyn's Drive-In, Little Bear, and the Red Dory.
Coastal Roasters.
Does Coastal Roasters serve alcohol?
So it was outdoor seating.
Oh, it was outdoor seating, okay. All right, so these, um, what we need to do, we need to work on, um, another ordinance concerning it because as of right now, nobody can have outdoor because it's kind of gone away, um, the temporary grant.
Apparently it was only.
Only for a year.
Doesn't say that, but.
But many things happened during COVID and a lot of things were kind of ignored because we had other things to deal with. So we're gonna have to do another ordinance. But my other concern is, we have other restaurants serving outside and they have not been granted our permission. And it's Locals and it's Four Corners. Am I missing anyone else?
McCray's?
McCray's. Those three have, have been doing it, but that's fine because they're still under the COVID umbrella. So we really do, at this point, we can't grant any outdoor until we do another ordinance. Thank God we're entering winter, so there won't be a lot of concern about this right now. So we'll have to do it within the next couple of months. And, um, this was a real hot item way back when. At the time, the other places were not serving outdoors, so we gave the umbrella to those five because they were practicing this without a license and having no problems with it. So it's something we have to work on and we will. And hopefully get it done by February, uh, the end of January. And look at these restaurants that are serving outdoor. Now, if you look at some of these floor plans, like Locals for one does not have any kind of outdoor seating, but we all know they are out, outside during the summer. So that'll have to all be revised too at some point. But right now, there is no outdoor liquor licenses until we can figure this out, is that correct?
Except for the COVID exception.
Except for the COVID exception till April, which saves us.
They can serve drinks that are poured inside.
Right. But that's, that's the way we've always done this. Even when we did the exception, they had to pour it inside. There was no serving outside. And, and there was different, um, I'll have to relook at it, but it was like no outside in the middle of a parking lot. It had to be attached to the building in some way so that the waiters don't have to, they're just entering the area. And all of these people I've mentioned do have that criteria, but, um, we do have to do another ordinance for that.
So to the extent that you grant a license tonight, it should specify that alcohol service is limited to inside only because of the license and should state, state that on the license, so that would be a requirement.
But because of COVID, they can do it. It's kind of weird. Just thought, just.
For a very short period of time.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, question for the lawyer. Hypothetically speaking, if, uh, let's say I were to make a motion to approve all the Class B, a lot of Class BV liquor licenses for all the establishments listed, could I include in that motion that the COVID temporary measures apply to all of them?
It does.
They do.
They do? Okay.
It applies to all of them.
But the trick is, is that the COVID regulations say you can't use the COVID outside to expand the number of seats. So if you have 50 seats in your restaurant internal now and you want to go outside, you can only have 50 total. So you have 25 inside, 25 outside. You can't say 50 and then add another 25 to have 75. You have to have the same number of seats.
Yeah, because parking will become a whole big thing.
Parking and other issues.
And that's the bugaboo for this council.
And that goes when, that goes when we approve liquor licenses. It has to be the seedings they have indoor and if they decide to go outdoor, then you subtract the indoor seating.
Correct.
Now, the ones that I've mentioned that we umbrellaed in, they'd already been approved and we knew what they were doing. Like Evelyn's moved seats outside and made less inside. The same thing with The Boathouse, they were approved for the number of seats, including the outside. But the other ones that are new to outdoor will have to prove to us that those seedings were just incorporated and not added. Is that correct?
Correct.
I have one follow-up question, um, just going down the list here, uh, it makes sense to me, it's, you know, LIQ-23-2 all the way down. What is the test license for The Boathouse?
They entered the information before we switched over the, the tag for the license.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
They were quicker than us.
It's kind of a new system they're dealing with, but it's a really good system, I, um, it's working. Okay, so now that I've explained all that, um, I, I will open, um, I will open this to the public hearing. Introduce yourself and your address, even though we all know you.
Joe Souza, Hancock Street. I'm here because of the Local Z Restaurant. They have two issues that, uh, put them out of compliance with town code. The first issue is they're dumping water on the road. They've been doing it for two years. I called the police out there. I showed the officer that the water was clear down the Maplewood Cemetery. They have a pipe that comes out of the side of the building, runs across. It used to dump straight out and it was coming straight out and they, they moved the pipe over and they dug a hole in the ground that's not even deep enough in my knee. And they're dumping the water in there, it comes out across the walkway. Their building, I did the, uh, I checked the, um, survey, they only owe like three feet. Here's their back door, they have like three feet and then it's public right of way. So I checked the survey. So their water is crossing the public walkway and going out into the road. I showed the police officer, they assured me they were gonna do something about it two years ago. The second thing is the, uh, trucks are required, whenever they're delivering material, food, they're required to get the truck off of the road and it can't be the parking lot. They have to have a designated unloading area. That's in our town, uh, land ordinance, I went through and I gave all the information to the chief of police, explained to him that the trucks are not supposed to be parked, double parked. So you have a row of cars that are pointed towards the building with their rear end sticking out towards the road. Then you have a 75-foot tractor trailer just around the corner from Stafford and onto Hancock with its tailgate down, unloading groceries, blocking more than the one lane. And then if people are parked across the street, it's a busy road, there's several hundred houses down that road. People from Four River and Tiverton use it. I brought this to the Tiverton police, they came out there, I was making a video and they arrested me for disorderly conduct. Fortunately, there were so many lies in the statements, they had to drop the charges. So I saw the statements, the girl accused me of being parked illegally in the road, arresting me. That's beyond the point, that's over.
But this has nothing to do with this liquor license, we cannot.
It says that all, it says they have to be in compliance. You just said that, they have to be in compliance.
But they have to be compliance to the liquor license rules.
No, they have to be in compliance with all town requirements.
Well, the discharge of water is a Department of Health issue, so that's.
And the trucks.
It's a public hazard, we send a sand out there. We have to send a sand out there every time they do it.
Joe, listen to me for a minute, I.
Well, it's not, tell me about a public hazard. It's a public hazard because they're creating an ice situation.
I said, the Department of Health would regulate the discharge of water.
Joe, you need to listen, this has been an ongoing problem.
The town has an ordinance, are you not aware?
Joe, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave if you don't listen to me right this second.
I'm speaking with the.
No, you need, you speak to me, okay?
Okay.
All right, this has been an ongoing problem for a long time. I've been very aware of it, the police chief has been very aware of it, the town administrator. I understood that some of these problems have been resolved.
No.
You were the only one that's complaining about it in the neighborhood.
Monday, there was a truck parked in Miller Road unloading fruit from that Four River.
All right, well, what I understood was they were allowed to do that.
They're not allowed to do that. If you look at the town ordinance, it says they have to have off, they're required, all businesses are required to have a loading and unloading area on their property. It's been, I've been there for 30 years, Poor Cat never did that, Paul Toobie never did that. It's only been this last owner that has had cars parked there.
Right, and you've had a problem with this owner that we all know about.
Yeah.
So at this point, we'll have the town administrator look into it again. We'll have the police chief look into it again, um, and we'll go from there.
We have ordinance against sump pumps dumping in the road.
I understood that that's not happening anymore.
It is happening, it was, there was ice on the road the other day.
Okay, well, we'll look into it, we'll have whoever we need to have, is that, okay. We'll look into it.
All right, please, let's get a different solicitor because he doesn't know what he's talking about.
You know what, Joe, you're being inappropriate and I'm gonna have to ask you to leave. Why don't you leave?
I understand that.
Joe, you need.
We have a solicitor who doesn't understand.
Joe, you need to leave, could someone escort Joe out of the building?
Bye.
Please. Thank God. Okay.
Is the public hearing closed?
Yeah. Anyone else want to talk? All right, public hearing is closed, go ahead.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Class BV liquor licenses for items 1 through 15, including the test license.
Do, do we need to say anything about?
Well, we need to say, meaning all. Indoor seating only.
Consistent with the plan submitted for indoor seating.
Seating only. Okay.
I will amend my ordinance to include the language as solicit, as recommended by the solicitor. My motion, I don't know.
Got it.
Joe was just here yelling at us.
And I, I will second. Boy, I got a real deja vu there for a moment. Okay, so I have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Class BBL Limited Liquor License, Classic Pizza, 486 Main Road, Groundswell Cafe and Bakery, uh, 383 Main Road, Jackie's Galaxy, uh, Tiverton, 777 Casino Boulevard. Groundswell Bakery does have outdoor on the porch, which is part of their building. And we decided that at the last license. So it's, it's part of their building itself. Yes, it's totally covered. All right, I'd like to open, um, the public hearing. Anyone have any comments? I'm gonna close the public hearing, any comments from the council? Go ahead, John.
All right, so on Groundswell, obviously we know they have seating along the porch out front. It's not reflected here in the plan.
You know, I, I was looking, it is.
It took me a while to figure it out. I'll show you.
It's, it's the porch.
I was staring at it yesterday.
There's no seats.
Well, it, it, it doesn't look like it's, it looks like it's inside.
Those are window boxes. I drive by it every day.
Yeah, I thought they were the seats.
Yeah, that's what I thought they were.
So I just, it would be nice if they would update, that's all. Because there's definitely not six tables on that stretch there. Like, there's like four.
Well, that, I thought the same thing Mike saw, but that was.
Yeah, so he, I stand corrected.
Okay. All right, so.
With that, I'll make a motion that we approve the Class BBL limited liquor licenses for numbers one through three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Class BT, Bed and Tavern, Brookdale Secundit Bay, 1215 Main Road. I'd like to open up the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the Class BT license for Brookdale Secundit Bay.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Okay, the next one is unlimited club licenses. Bayview Holy Ghost Club, 66 Bottom Street, Woodrow L. Sylvia VFW, Post 5392, 135 Show Street.
Four, 134.
134. I'm dyslexic today. I'd like to open up the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Madam President, motion to approve the Class D unlimited club licenses for numbers one and two.
Second.
All right, non-advertised public hearing.
All those in favor?
All those in favor.
Sorry.
Indoor shooting range.
Somebody raised their hand?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Indoor shoot, I hate this meeting when we do this. Indoor shooting range renewals, Tiverton Mountain Gun Club, 1529 Fish Road, Secundit River Outfitters, 777 Main Road. I'd like to open up the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Madam President, I have a question. Just on, and I know Jay, quick question for you, if you can. Come on. When we expanded your hours, didn't we put stipulations on the expanded hours?
Yeah, at the beginning.
Because I don't see those on the renewal application.
You don't see what on there?
The stipulations.
It was Sunday, right? Wasn't it like?
It was Sunday, and then I wanted to open up early for training, which I would still like to do. The difference is, is I would like to be able to do live-fire training in the range, and I can only do that if I can turn the range on.
But when we approved the expansion, we limited to only the non-live-fire training, correct, for Sunday mornings?
It was supposed to be classes. No, not Sunday morning.
Okay.
This is during the week.
We never did Sunday? There was something about Sunday, am I right?
Sunday afternoons, after we closed down to the public, I wanted to do shoots, and I've done a few of them. And we always have the range off by nine o'clock.
Okay.
Did you say off?
Off.
Off by nine?
By nine, yep.
Didn't we also talk about a certain type of gun that's not as loud?
I mean, depending on the caliber.
Because I thought we had talked. Stop laughing at me. We talked about a certain type that, that was at certain times because it wasn't as loud.
Yeah, those were just going to be handguns shot during the competitions, and that's still the case.
Okay. Thank you.
So is there any expansion right now?
I want to be able to turn the range on during the week, before noon time.
During the week.
And everybody else is up working.
But when we expanded it before, we did not permit that, correct? We permitted the classes, but not the range.
But this is weekdays, though. I don't think you asked for this last time, did you?
Is there backup for any of this, or?
Yeah, you have to go on the computer behind it. Yeah.
Yeah, but the, that's why I ask, because on the application, and I had it up and I just lost it. It only says hour, you know, like, I forget, I'm going to get them wrong, eight to nine PM or something like that. I'm looking it back up again.
So what times are you asking for now?
Occasionally, I'd like to open at eight o'clock for classes. Everybody else is up working at seven o'clock.
Would you consider a little later, like nine o'clock? I'm concerned about your neighbors who work nights.
Okay.
Who come home and they're sleeping. You can't assume everyone's up and about at that hour. And you can hear it from outside, because I, it's not loud.
No, it's not loud.
No, I did go to see what they were hearing. And you can hear it if, if you pay attention.
Right.
You can hear ping, ping, ping.
But you can also hear the cars going by, which I did a DB test today, and the traffic going by is louder than what you can hear from the building.
I did go by just to see, like, I just wanted to know, is it really loud? Like, what am I missing here? And I did, and I parked far down the road to listen, and I could barely hear it. And I, I was listening. I had my windows down and car radio off and engine off. Would you consider a little later, like nine o'clock or maybe 10 o'clock?
I don't want to have to. I mean, if this is a four-hour class, I'd like to be able to get that in before we open to the public and to our members at noon time. And there's no restrictions on lawn mowers and leaf blowers and nail guns.
What's the sound ordinance too? So if you meet the sound ordinance, yeah, go ahead.
I would just suggest that whatever we, we permit at this point in time at least be limited to what we had agreed to for the expanded hours previously.
And not allow the eight to?
Right.
Is that every day, the eight? Is that every day, or just?
It's only going to be when we have classes. This is not going to be.
How many classes per week is what I'm saying?
Who knows at this point? I don't even have my classroom done yet. So I want to be able to offer the classroom, and then follow up to that would be the live-fire training in the range.
But when it's really quiet and there's a house near you, I can understand how they're hearing it. See, my problem with this whole new system is I'm opening a public hearing, but unless you went on the computer and looked, you don't know what he's asking for. And the neighbors don't know unless they go through the, what we just, what we did during the agenda meeting and what I did at home, and it's a complicated way to get about it. And that's part of my problem with this new way, because.
And I'm going to assume, to be fair to you, when you put in your hours in here, it didn't let you put in any comments or anything like that? You just had to pick the, the beginning and the end?
I didn't do it.
Okay, okay, okay. I mean, that's usually how one of these systems works, so.
What's everybody's pleasure?
I, I can't see the backup, so.
No, that's, that's why we put on the agenda how to do it. But I have to tell you, it's complicated, and they talked me through it. John?
I have a couple of points. I think the applicant's spot on and looking for, as long as it's within the noise parameters set forth by the noise ordinance, you know, I don't think we should be specifically regulating his business as it relates to ambient sounds. If it's less than 85 decibels outside of the building, then I'm really confused as to what we're talking about here. And then secondarily, this is our annual reminder that the town of Tiverton should not be involved in issuing licenses for gun ranges that are regulated by the ATF and other federal entities. We are opening ourselves up to liability if something actually happens there.
I disagree a little bit. I think we have the right to do this, but my problem is, John, that every year when this license comes up, neighbors come and complain.
It's because it's a gun range.
Last time we granted you a little more, but neighbors do come, and I don't think this was advertised properly. I don't think.
Well, it was advertised properly.
It was advertised properly, but not with all the information they needed to hear. Because if the neighbors had, had the application in front of them, Mike, do you agree? They probably would have shown up and given us some opinion on this.
So let me just ask, because again, this is the application, and I know you didn't, your wife did this, but during range, range hours, you shoot more than handguns, correct? Because the application says type of indoor range activity, handguns, and that's it. So to be fair to you, this limits you, and I, I don't think anybody wants to limit you to that degree unless we limit during certain hours for that handgun, like we talked about last time. But this only says handguns.
It says you only shooting handguns, so.
In general?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all it says. It's type of indoor range activity, handguns.
Okay, so this is what I suggest we do. We table it until the next meeting.
We can't, because he can't operate. So I would suggest that we approve it based on the last expansion, whatever the guidelines were there, and if you want to come back and talk about.
Because you have to change this.
Others. And that last expansion doesn't limit you to handguns, because we know that you have more than handguns that people shoot there.
But while you're applying for now, it's only handguns being shot there. So that needs to be fixed. We'll bring you back, and then we'll talk about the expanded hours. How's that?
The other, the other expanded hours.
Yeah, the expanded hours.
After it gets advertised?
Yeah, it'll be advertised. But, but I mean.
Which is what you guys want.
Well, it has to be advertised.
It has to be advertised. The citizen, it has to be advertised. We don't make decisions just based on what we want.
It was advertised. That's why I'm here.
Right, but I, it's a renewal, but it's changed.
But this renewal application does not have the stipulations that we put in the last one, and it would limit, if we stuck to this.
There shouldn't be stipulations.
Okay, but regardless of what your thought is on that, regardless of that.
Why is it that I can't make money and I can't have?
If we approve this as it is today, your customers could only shoot handguns, because it's not accurate. And I'm not, I don't want to limit you to that.
This, right. This application, you do not want us to approve tonight.
But I think we can still go back to the last.
The last.
Renewal based on the prior application.
Your expansion, you'll have to put in a new one and change that handgun thing. And we have to advertise for how many weeks? One. One. It's only one.
Okay, I thought it was two.
It's only one, so I can hear it again in December, the first meeting in December, against expanded hours. And then we can make a decision based on all of that information. I understand you need to make a living. None of us are against you making a living. Quite frankly, I have, I don't think we've gotten any complaints in the last year about you.
Yeah, so the last one did.
So there's no hostility here whatsoever. You just need to fix this right now, and we'll see you in December. I, I, I know you think we're against, I always get, every time you're in front of me, I get the idea you think we're against you. We're, we're really not.
That's traditionally is how it has been.
Well, not with you, though. I, I don't feel we have.
The prior owner, for sure.
Well, the prior owner at the beginning, but we allowed him, we, we really grew to have a good relationship with him. And like, like you, we, we didn't get any complaints. So don't feel that there's anything, I don't know why you feel this way, but I don't think we've ever given you that impression. And no one is at your place bugging you, doing anything like that. So the motion will be to, go ahead.
Can I make it?
Yeah.
So motion that we approve the Secundit River's Outfitters 777 Main Road license applica, renewal application for an indoor shooting range based on the last approval that we made with the understanding that he is not limited to simply handguns. But cover it.
And.
Second, and just a point of clarity, everything he's been doing for the last year, he may continue to do, and then the only thing for consideration at the next meeting is expanding his hours. That's what we're, I just want to make sure we're very clear to the applicant.
I thought I was clear about that.
Okay.
And he just needs to change that handgun thing, too.
We just, we, we're approving it. He can use whatever they normally use.
Okay.
So I don't have to go in and reapply?
No.
Not for the, not for your current one, but if you want to do the expansion, you have to.
If you want to add more hours, then.
More live-range hours.
Come back on, yeah, you'll be on the next agenda for the next one.
You were looking to expand the live-range activity, correct?
Can, can I just ask about that? So you start in the morning at eight o'clock or nine o'clock doing the classes?
I would like to start at eight.
And, and it's a four-hour class?
Most of them are four hours.
So how much of that is a sit-down in the classroom?
It would depend on the class.
If they're like beginners or?
Beginner classes are more classroom time than there is range time, but for the experienced people that want more training, it has to be live-fire. You can't dry-fire and, and get the same training.
So, so the, the start time of the actual shooting would change depending on, I would imagine you'd have like a beginner class, an intermediate, maybe.
Now, the reason why you're not allowed to shoot till 12, that was decided a long time ago because of, well, because it was dis, because we thought it would be disturbing people from sleeping.
Okay, well, let's, let's think about this for one minute. We can't open until noon time during the week when everybody's going to work, yet I get to open at 10 o'clock on Saturday and nine o'clock on Sunday. Does this make any sense to anybody here? Because it certainly doesn't to me. So that's the only reason why I would like to start at eight during the week.
Is the expanded hours on there?
No, but we have that historically, so.
Point taken. So we'll see you again in December.
Madam President?
I know we have to, I know we need to vote.
Yeah, I was just going to add, along the lines of what the applicant's talking about, I live down at Sappowett. It is now the midst of hunting season. There are guns going off behind my house, starting at like 6:30, 7:00 AM, you know, as soon as the sun goes up. So, you know, for what it's worth, I, I think that allowing the applicant, again, when we get to it in two weeks, you know, to expand his hours to 8:00 AM, to me, that's a non-issue, because I live with hunters, and the noise is considerably louder where I live, because it's, there are no baffles or anything mitigating the sound.
It's not going to be an everyday occurrence either.
All right.
Madam President, this will all be in writing and not with fancy directions on how to find it?
We, we can print that one out. We, we can print that out, write that application out for the next agenda. Yeah, the new one. Okay.
And so, does the format allow him, he would have to upload a separate document, I think, or his wife would, because the format doesn't allow him to deviate from the parameters of the question.
I'm going to be here all night.
Why, why wouldn't we just?
You'll have to come in and we'll work it out.
Yeah.
Does this, is this, is this for new applications, the system, too?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so why don't you go see Joan and she'll fix it.
Just do a paper copy.
Yeah.
Way easier.
It'll be much easier for all of us, too.
No paper, no paper.
Keep Dunham Mifflin in business. Right.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor in a second before I get distracted again.
Who did the second?
John did.
John.
I did, sorry, I was voting already.
All, all those in favor? I thought you were waving to her.
Hello.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, a motion to approve, uh, the indoor shooting range for the Tiverton Run Gun Club as well.
Second?
Motion, uh, public, I already opened it, yeah.
You did it on both.
I did it on both. Motion's been made, I got a second, all those in favor? Okay.
Hey, let's keep it going.
Approval of entertain, now, these are non-advertised public hearings, but I still have to open them up. Um, Atlantic Sports, uh, this is approval of entertainment license. Atlantic Sports Bar, Bayview Holy Ghost Club, Sandy Woods Farm, Springs Restaurant, Bally's Tiverton Casino and Hotel, Barcellos Family Restaurant, Brookdale Secana Bay, Woodrow, El Sylvia VFW, Four Corners Art Center, Sports Kitchen LLC. Like to open up the public hearing. Any comments from anyone? I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Yeah, that was my question. So these are all indoor entertainment licensed home? There's no outdoor entertainment license for any of these, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam President, a motion to approve the indoor, uh, the, yeah, the indoor entertainment licenses for items E one through ten.
Motion's been made in second. Um, any further entertain, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
There'll be more entertainment coming soon, I think.
Yeah, there'll be more entertainment coming soon.
Moving on to mobile home park license renewals. Item F, um, Dad's Estates Mobile Home Park, Four Seasons Mobile Home Association, Heritage Home Park Cooperative, Inc., and Patrick Brook Park, Inc. Open up a public hearing. Anyone want to be heard? Anyone want to be heard? Anyone wants to be heard? Close the public hearing, any questions? Deb?
So, we had some licensing issues with Septic on some of these.
They're good to go.
Hooray.
Okay.
DM has come down and they've complied, they've done what they had to do.
And what about some of them?
And they're monitoring it. Excuse me?
What about some of the disasters in one of them?
They, they don't know what-
Didn't we have some that were basically-
Yeah, they, they rectified that. They, they put in brand new system.
Mr. Vice Chair?
No, the inhabit, the habitability, I think.
No, 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 it's a whole different, it's a whole different issue, but we're working on that as well. With the building officer and the tax collection to show that, uh, we, we are allowing demolition permits for trails that need to be demolished. But we are not allowing them to put new trails on when the taxes have left.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yep.
Uh, motion to approve items F one through four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Dennis. All those in favor? Okay, none opposed. Moving on to manufactured home, elderly community license renewal, Country View Estates 213 Hurst Lane. Open up a public hearing. This is recommended by the planning board, by the way, to approve. Anyone wish to be heard?
Yes.
Yes? Thank you, Stu. Maybe I read that wrong.
Under our subdivision regulations, the planning board sub- by the way, I'm Stu Hardy, chairman of the, uh, Tiverton Planning Board. And our subdivision regulations, I believe, require, um, all quarry licenses to come to the planning board.
This isn't the quarry, this is Country View. You can stay for the quarry.
And, and also, um, and also several of the large developments such as Country View. Uh, I think at the present time, it's only now Country View. I don't think it is, um, uh, the villages at Mount Hope Bay, although I may be wrong about that.
Yeah, they're not manufactured homes, yeah.
In either case, neither of these ever came to the, uh, planning board for consideration. They were never, they were not, we did it a year ago.
Okay, so they haven't come back before.
Yeah, so I don't know how you want to handle that.
Can we ex- huh?
Uh, I did talk to the, um, Land Use Clerk and he said it was on the November fourteenth meeting that was canceled. So it'll be on the next meeting in December.
So can we-
For the planning board.
Yeah, approved, subject to planning board review.
Yeah.
Just kind of have a motion for that?
So moved.
Oh, is there-
Oh, wait, public hearing.
Yeah, any other public comments before I move on? Stu, why don't you stay because you want to be here?
For the quarry.
For the quarry. Um, although you're gonna say the same thing, but any other public comments?
Just, we had had-
Close public hearing, go ahead, Deb.
I'm sorry. We had, we had complaints last year about Country View Estates and, um, I know Counselor Edwards did go out and visit.
So did, so did Counselor Demidaris, so did the town administrator.
If you will, I just talked to them tonight.
Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right, so I talked to Jane Rogers and, uh, they are quite happy with, uh, the progress that's been made at Country View and they wish to express their appreciation to the council, to Chris Cotta, the town administrator, for all the, for all the progress that's been made and they're very appreciative.
I want to say that, uh, it was Chris-
And John Hoyle.
It was John Hoyle as a far of us. We went through every single, we went with the neighbors, we looked at every single violation they felt. And, um, the owners of Country View has been cooperative. John has, um, worked with them and, um, i- it's working out, I believe.
Yeah.
Rosemary, you can come up.
Thought we were done with the public hearing.
Oh, we were.
Yeah.
Could we ask for, uh, some documentation on that to put in the files?
Sure, John, John has it all.
A memo or something like that, just-
Yeah, we'll get it from John.
And make sure that it's on the December-
Okay.
Planning Board Agenda.
Okay, yeah.
I'll give you my file.
Yeah, it's, it's all very well documented and it's all, it's, it was, it was done very cooperatively with the neighbors, too. They were very good with us and, and all, and they've been in constant communication with Jay. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve the manufactured home, uh, license renewal for Country View Estates 213 Hurst Lane, subject to approval by, subject to a positive recommendation from the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, we're on quarry.
Quarry.
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, given the number of people that are here for reappointments and the fact that it's already on a clock, I'd like to make a motion to take items eight A through F out of order right now.
Could, could we just do quarry because Stu's up here to talk about the planning board?
Fine, by me.
Okay, so we'll do, we'll do this first. Helga Brothers Sand and Gravel LLC, seventeen sixty-four Crandall Road. Planning Board recommendation. Stu, do you want to speak on that?
So, uh, exactly the same, uh, resolution or motion, I think, would be appropriate, um, subject to, uh, planning board approval, which we will undoubtedly grant on the fifth of December.
Okay. Motion, um-
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Anyone have any comments? I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Madam President, motion to approve the, um, quarry li- uh, renewal license for Helga Brothers Sand and Gravel LLC, seventeen sixty-four Crandall Road, subject to a positive recommendation from the planning board.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Okay, now, John, you want to bring up A, eight A-
Eight A through F.
Um, do I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made second, all those in favor? Okay. Library Board, uh, appointments?
We can, is there a reason why we can't combine A and D?
I was just gonna, yeah, I was just gonna ask that.
Say that again? It's A, B, C, D?
No, I know, but A and D are Library Board of Trustees. The first one says two vacancies.
Oh, yeah.
The second one says three vacancies.
And there's, I, yeah.
So can we combine those two?
Yes.
And how many vacancies do we have?
Yeah, there's three according to the website.
Right. So the Library Board of Trustees, seven-member board, three-year term, and there is three vacancies according to the website. Mike pointed this out to me yesterday. And we're going, and the Library Board of Trustees, term ending ten fifteen, twenty twenty-six, ten fifteen, two for ten, fifteen, twenty twenty-six, and one for ten fifteen, twenty twenty-five, which I think is Sanford's, right?
I think so.
So the vacancies would be Jay, Kim, and Sanford. So Sanford is the one-year term. Is the completion of his year. Okay. So Representative Edwards, get up here. I'm not saying please.
I'm recu- I'm recusing, just so we're all on the same page.
You really don't need to, but, okay.
I'd forgotten how painful licensing night is.
I don't trust the lawyers.
I know, isn't it?
It's lovely.
I know.
I picked the best night to be reappointed.
So, John, tell us why, um, Jay, tell us why you would like to be back on the board.
Uh, it has been a great experience the last eighteen months and I just can't wait to serve some more.
Okay. All right, any questions for this gentleman?
Thank you, though.
Yes, thank you for your service.
So his term would be the ten fifteen, twenty twenty-six, right?
One of, one of those two.
Yes. Okay.
Kim, Kim's here, Kim was here.
Kim, where are you?
Oh, there she is.
Kim, I'm sure you feel the same way. It's been a great pleasure.
Ditto.
Yes, and I know it means a lot to you, it's a lot to be on the library board and you've done a good job and thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so I'd like to entertain a motion for these two people.
Make a motion that we waive our policy to have to wait an extra meeting? And that we appoint-
Okay, let's, let's just motion, yeah.
You just want to do it one at a time, okay?
Motion to waive, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion, all those in favor? Go ahead.
And the motion to appoint John G. Edwards, the fourth of sixty-nine South Avenue, reappoint him to, uh, the Library Board of Trustees for a term ending ten fifteen, twenty twenty-six. And to reappoint Kim Sutherland of one ninety-nine Fury Avenue, uh, to a term ending ten fifteen, twenty twenty-six.
Have a motion in second, all those in favor? Congratulations.
And thank you for your, thank you for your service on the library board.
And thank you for waiting so long. All right, um, okay, so I did that. Historical Preservation Advisory Board, five-member board, three-year term, three vacancies, term ending ten fifteen, twenty twenty-six, two of them, and ten fifteen, twenty twenty-seven, one. Stu Hardy, fifty-one Summerfield Lane, requ- hi, Stu, request reappointment. Now, he is the longer term, correct?
Yes. Twenty twenty-six.
Okay. All right. Stu, tell us why you'd like to do this again.
Well, this is, uh, un- unlike the planning board, this is not a regulatory function. The, the whole purpose of our Historic Preservation Advisory Board is to encourage and support greater, uh, knowledge about Tiverton's history and Tiverton's historical resources. And so we do that in a number of ways. And I was just talking to, uh, Lauren Fogarty, uh, earlier this evening about supporting how we can help her support the, uh, the quasi-tricentennial, um, uh, a- activities because that's kind of what we do. And probably some, some of you probably noticed the, uh, uh, display of historic photographs that we did here in Town Hall. We've done that twice now. So that's the kind of thing we do and I like to help as much as I can. Sue, Sue Anderson does almost all of the work.
Right.
She does.
All right, um-
I have a book on a murder in Tiverton for you.
Yes, right, right.
I have a, um, I entertain a motion.
Can I, can I just comment? Because there's, there's a term ending twenty twenty-seven and there's a term ending twenty twenty-six. Which one are we appointing to?
The long one.
Twenty-six?
It's a twenty-six.
Why aren't we doing, what's the twenty-seven?
It's twenty twenty-three.
Oh.
It's a three-year term.
Okay.
Okay. So, we're in twenty twenty-three, a three-year term would bring it to twenty-six.
Okay.
So, but one bit of, there's one that says ten fifteen twenty-seven, that's the question.
That's the question.
Is this an open position?
But if it's a three-year term-
So when did you appoint that person?
Oh, it ended, okay, it ended in twenty twenty-four. So his ended in twenty-
Oh, it's somebody that left that ends in twenty twenty-four? No.
No, it's some, it's somebody that left years ago and that vacancy's just been there because we can't get volunteers to these boards.
I don't think there's been a full committee for a while, right? You've been short of a member of that committee for a while.
And, exactly. Yes, it's, it's five members, we only have four at the present time.
So that should be twenty-four.
Yeah. All right, well, both.
Yeah.
We're not appointed this evening anyway, but, all right. We're not, we're not positioned. Okay, so I need a motion to waive our policy.
So moved. Uh, Madam President, I'll amend my motion to also include that, uh, waive the policy and appoint Stu Hardy, fifty-one Summerfield Lane.
We have to do it one at a time.
We have to split them up, we've done them together in the past.
No, we haven't, not-
Why would we have to waive if there's more than enough?
But we still have to waive the policy. Because the policy says we appoint the next meeting. So we have to waive the policy.
Only when there's more vacancies. More people than vacancies.
Right, and that, there-
One person is one vacancy.
So technically, we didn't have to waive the last one because there's three, three vacancies.
Madam President, motion to waive the policy.
Second. Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? We do it when there's more-
Madam President, motion to reappoint Stu Hardy, fifty-one Summerfield Lane, to the Historic Preservation Advisory Board for a term ending ten fifteen, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, Stu.
Thank you, Stu. Juvenile Hearing Board, seven-member board, three-year terms, two vacancies, term ending ten fifteen, twenty twenty-six. Amanda Marie Souza, uh, requests reappointment for term, term ending ten fifteen, twenty twenty-six. This is what I have to say to all of you. We waive the policy when there's more positions available than people applying. When we have one position and six people applying, we interview and then we have to pick out of that six. And we usually don't waive the policy then. We go home, we think about it. So we always waive the policy when, when there's more positions than there's people applying. Amanda.
Hi.
Hi, so tell us why you'd like to be on the juvenile board?
Um, I think I've, uh, done a really good job so far, being on the, um, almost said planning board, but I'm not on that anymore. Um, the juvenile board, um, I enjoy it, I feel like I'm making a difference. That's about it.
Any questions for Amanda? All right, so I need to waive the policy, do I have-
Madam President, motion to waive the policy.
Second.
Motion's been ma- made and seconded, all those in favor?
Madam Chair, motion to reappoint, uh, Amanda Marie Souza, one sixty Ledger Lane, uh, to the juvenile hearing board for a term ending ten fifteen, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything. Personnel Board, five-member board, four-year term, one vacancy, term ending ten fifteen, twenty twenty-seven. Joy Gilk concern, three sixty Christopher Avenue. Is Joy here? No. This is the second time she has not appeared. Did we notify her again? We did. Yes, and I did not.
So Jim Carrey did call me today about the, well, she is tired of trying to do some things with her kids.
Okay.
So she couldn't make it.
So we'll put this on the next agenda. I, do I need a motion to table? No. Okay, Board of Canvassers, Republican alternate position, six-year term, ending ten fifteen, twenty twenty-four. The Republican chair gave me four names. Ak- Constance-
Constance.
Constance, I'm sorry. Is the first choice, I understand that.
Mark's got a health issue, he's going for surgery, so he probably won't be available.
Well, that's all right, because for this, we usually don't interview, um, per charter. I, I make the motion.
No, we did interview last night, yeah.
No, we did not interview, oh, we didn't interview Nancy again, that's right.
Because we had just interviewed her before.
So do you want to table this until Mark can show up?
Madam President, um, we got into a discussion around the policy and motioning and it was described to me at the last meeting that the Board of Canvassers is a different process, the policy does not apply. So respectfully, I think we should have voted the last meeting, I think we should be, we should just vote tonight and move on with this.
Can I, can I just ask, is he not available tonight or he's not available for this position?
He's going in for, uh, consultation probably pre-op in a couple of weeks and he probably will be down by some time.
So we should, we should move on to another? Okay, thank you.
So who would you suggest on that?
Well, the second is John, oh. How about John, though, as number two? All right, so John is your number two choice, right?
Yeah.
Okay. John, come up. I didn't understand that he wasn't available, I thought he wasn't available tonight. Hi, John.
Good evening.
So tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is John Chello, I moved into town here about four years ago from Barrington. I'm a mechanical engineer by degree, I've been a real estate, uh, professional for the last twelve years. I run my own small business and I've sat on a number of councils, uh, regarding Board of Contractors, uh, in Massachusetts. And, and here in Rhode Island, I sit as a condo president of, uh, two associations, one for seventy-two units, another one for thirty. And I've, uh, been treasurer and secretary on numerous boards for the last twelve years.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for John?
Not a comment. Being a condo president, I know from experience, is a thankless job, even more thankless, I think, sometimes than our jobs.
Yep, going through a battle right now for North Providence, that debacle of the building being condemned.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Okay. So I understand John is your second choice.
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion. If no one has any questions for John, I'd like to make a motion to appoint John Cello.
Yes.
As a Republican alternate position, six-year term ending ten fifteen twenty-two four.
Second.
So what, what this is, is the other's term.
Filling Nancy's.
Oh, okay, the whole thing.
Nancy filled, Nancy filled the.
Yeah, it's very complicated, but we're doing the right thing. All right, so I have a second. All those in favor?
Discussion real quick.
Yep.
Again, not to belabor this, but again, we, I don't believe we should be interviewing for this position, given the process. So I just want to make sure I'm on record saying that again.
Okay. Motion been made. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor. Welcome for John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to go back to the licenses. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and we're going to do the quarry. We already did the quarry.
Petrol licenses.
All right. Petroleum storage license, Andrew E. Snyder, 605 Neck Road, Tiverton Department of Public Works, 50 Industrial Way, Inland Fuel Terminals, 24 State Avenue, American Dream Gas, 400 Main Road, Phil's Propane, 477 Crandall Road, George's Gas and Service, 1215 Stafford Road, Bally's Tiverton Casino and Hotel, 777 Casino, Bill of Vod, Joe Quick Ma, 1308 Stafford Road, Quick Fuel, excuse me, Quick Fuel Stop, 861 Main Road, Standish Boat Yacht, Inc., 1697 Main Road. I'd like to open up the public hearing. Any comments? I'm going to close the public hearing. Mike?
So all of our gas stations should be on here, correct?
There were three that I missed in the list.
Okay.
I can name two of them.
Tiverton Sun.
And George's.
No, George's is.
George's is there.
I said George.
The chief's, the one used to be Valero.
Oh, all right.
Now, I can't remember his name now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that Quick Fuel Stop?
Oh, was that Quick Fuel Stop? Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
There was three that were advertised, but they're not on this list. So I'd like to put those on the November 30th meeting.
Sure.
So we can get that through before the end of the license.
Which is this Thursday.
Yes, that's the advertised public hearing.
Have you already advertised for those three?
They were advertised, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, so do I have a motion?
Public hearing.
I did open the public hearing, didn't I? Yeah, I did.
Yeah, you closed it.
I closed it too. So do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve the petroleum storage licenses, items I, one through 10.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor. Fireworks license.
Sorry, can we just, just to make the record clear, the three that were advertised, can you just continue that hearing for those licenses till November 30th, please?
Okay, I like the motion to continue. Name them. I have to name them, right?
If you know them.
Do you know them?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this is what, the motion is that there were three omitted.
From the agenda.
From the agenda, which were advertised. So we'll move those three to the November 30th meeting. That's the motion. Who wants to make it?
So moved.
Okay, and your second, Jay. All those in favor. Okay. Fireworks license renewal, Elaine's Country Store, 1204 Fish Road, Crossroads Liquor, 1540 Boogamash, Ramco Fireworks, 1560 Boogamash, Step-by-Step Convenience, 429 Main Road, Firework Connection, 34 Main Road. Like to open the public hearing. Or close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Like to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve items J. 1 through 5.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Flea Market license renewal. I think we lost the flea market lady. She went home. Room 177 Flea Market, 1560 Boogamash Road. Like to open for discussion, open the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing. Entertainer motion.
Madam President, motion to approve the flea market license K. 1.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor. Okay. General Business, Administrator Carter, Council President DiMadera, discussion and possible vote to advertise a public hearing regarding a temporary moratorium on all developments for housing that exceed four residential units. This has been worked on for a couple of months. We have hired Mike DeSisto and got permission from the council to do so. He wrote up the moratorium, which is, you just got a different draft of it with just a little tweaking. Chris, you want to give any history?
So I worked with, I created a small group. Trish Hilton, Stu Hardy, myself. We worked with Mike DeSisto to go over some of the issues that we had in town. Ashley Sweet was part of it as well at some point. Ashley and myself and somebody, order experts from Western Sampson had meeting with the water authorities, State Water Resources Board. And we have some grave concerns about some of the development coming towards town in order for planning, but to make appropriate decisions in the very near future. We went out and got a grant, which I've explained to the council before. That was approved. The scope of work has been approved. We're starting work on that study very quickly. And there are other things related to development in town, specifically as it relates to the eastern side of town, where there is no current infrastructure, fact that both sewer commission of this wastewater district and the water authorities are under the impression that they can expand their resources out there, which would be, I think, detrimental to the comprehensive plan. That we, the council, we need to create some ordinances so that that is done appropriately. And this short window of time will give us that ability to do that. So we don't have developments coming in that were never intended to be, or our infrastructure was never intended to be. So it's a pretty comprehensive issue. We do think that this moratorium, you've got three weeks while it's being advertised. If you see anything that you think needs to be tweaked, modified, or whatever, we can do that at the public hearing. And obviously, I want the planning board to, it doesn't need to go for their recommendation at this point. It will be once it's actually full up. No, no, it doesn't. It doesn't need to go to them at all. But after, during that short window, when the moratorium is in place, any, any input that we have from those entities would be very welcome to ensure that the town is putting its best foot forward, moving forward for development purposes. This would not prohibit any single-family house or any development of four units or less to be developed. So with that, I would, you know, I think it, it's good to be put for the council's opinion that we get this out. But this could have been done by emergency originally. We looked at that. We discussed it. We didn't think it was fair to do that for both the developers and the public. They should have the, this put out for three weeks for them to digest, evaluate, and come and make commentary on.
Once this does get put in place, there's six months of very hard work. There's going to have to go into this and probably some subcommittees, but we'll work with the committees we already have, too. But I would hope that Trish and Stu will stay a real part of this.
They were instrumental today with some edits.
So would either one of you like to say anything further on this, or you're all set? Okay, all right.
Madam President.
Okay. Yeah, I don't care advertising, but I'd like as much information to get out there. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve to advertise for the public hearing as requested by the administrator and the council president.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion, Jay?
Just one, page six.
I've lost everything.
Very top of the page. This is on the new format.
Yes.
It's not chloroform, it's coliform.
Okay.
All right.
See it?
Good, good catch.
Good catch, Jack.
If you find any others, if you find any others, let me know.
All right. So I have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor. Okay. It's going out for public advertisement. Nineteen C. Administrator Carter, Council President DiMadera, discussion, possible vote for resolution regarding easement over the library property at 34 Roosevelt Avenue to allow access from Roosevelt Avenue to Raymond F. Jones Memorial Park. I want to make this perfectly clear. It's not the parking lot. It's beyond the bridge. There is a drainage area there. We've had Rick working on it with the DPW. They feel they can put underwater, underground pipes and then gravel it or make it more parking. But the problem with the dog park right now is they can't do any maintenance at all. There's no way in to it. There's only the cover bridge entrance. So Representative Edwards left, but he was with Chris and I last week, and he has a lot of knowledge on construction and all of this. And he, and with Rick, we're going to try to make an entrance as you go down Roosevelt somewhere in that area so that they can bring in whatever they need because they have to renew the wood chips and everything. But right now, there's no way to maintain this right now because there's no way you can bring trucks in. And even if they wanted to bring more chairs in or heavy benches, there's no way to get to it right now. It does not involve the parking lot area at all.
No, not at all.
Mike, you said we can do this. There's no problem with.
The only thing I've talked to the administrator about is we want to have a defined easement, so we're going to have to get a survey.
Okay.
And then figure out what the meets and bounds of that easement will be, and we can figure out.
Rick, you hear that? Okay. All right.
So what I have done, and I did tell Mike this, is that I was going to see if the library actually has a survey historically from when they bought the property.
They might.
That if we can use that, fine. If we need to update it, so be it. But.
That property was only given to the library for drainage purposes. That was it. Because there needed to be a runoff, right? And that's why that leg is there. We can still allow the drainage.
Yep, without impacting.
Without impacting the drainage at all, but allow more parking for the dog park, which to me is what we need.
So we talked about this a year ago. This is one of the projects the DPW hadn't got to to recently. They've done some clearing. We've got a lot more clearing to do to make sure that we can fully understand what that property looks like. But we will definitely put together a plan. We will invite the people from the dog park to take a look at it and the library people as well. It is what it is. We will define exactly where that easement's going to go, but it will give them the ability to come and go into that park without obstruction and be able to bring materials in and take materials out.
And also extra parking.
Yeah.
One of the problems with the library, with the way it was, was they were driving over the grass to get in there from the library property. So with the fence now, there's no entrance to do that. So there needs to be another.
But we agreed to this a year ago, so we're actively looking at doing it now.
And, and we did have a meeting about it, right?
Recently, we did, yeah.
Well, a year ago.
A year ago, we did, yeah.
At least.
I don't know how many people I've met with recently.
So we're allowed to do this with this piece of property, right, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam President.
We all both parcels.
Just a point of clarification on this because I know that we received some OLS money or whatever it is for the library, and that was predicated on the size of the lot and the making sure that was contiguous. So I just would want to make sure that the solicitor is going to make sure that there's going to be zero impact to any of the library funding or the bonds or any of that stuff.
It doesn't take away land. It's just an easement to pass over land.
Okay. Well, if we're talking about installing permanent parking, that might be a different issue. So I'd just like to make sure that that's going to be clarified before we go forward.
Madam President, along those lines, in an abundance of caution, 220 RICR 60151, Section 15, 1.5D, specifies that a library may not dispose or encumber its site or facilities during the period of repayment, which is until 2033, without permission from OLIS.
Mike?
So can I, can I suggest that whatever the administrator and solicitor do, that they make sure, similar to what John had said, they just make sure that, you know, they run it by whatever bodies that need to be run by, such as OLS.
And I have to tell you that Mike and I and Todd and Chris have been talking about this for weeks now. Mike has done a lot of research. Todd has done a lot of research. We're not going to do anything that's, that's going to disturb the bond. We're going to do, but we're trying to make both entities live in nice kumbaya and exist and have their own areas. And that's what we need. So as long as it's all legally done, do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I have no intent in making a motion. I would actually suggest that we continue this to a future meeting until we have proof positive from OLS that we can actually do this.
Do, what do you think, Mike?
Would it hurt to ask?
Mike?
I'd like it in writing. The last thing we want is to default those bonds.
Ask what the easement is, so we got to, we got to at least move forward and get the defined easement. So nothing hurts us to draw an easement. We own both parcels, right?
We're asking.
All we're doing is asking us to figure out what an easement would look like, where it is. Let's define it. And it can't be granted until the council grants it. So we can, we can then go to OILS and say, this is the easement we want. This is what the town intends to do. Will you approve it or not? Even whether that, even if they have to approve, I'm not really sure. I just, that regulation was just thrown at me tonight. So, but we could at least get the process moving and have an easement drawn. Drawing an easement doesn't create an easement.
But does the body need to vote in order to draw an easement? I think that would be something the administrator could just do.
We just wanted to make sure that you all agree. If we can do it, is this okay?
Well, that's probably the best place to do it.
So, right, that's really what we did. We're not going to go through all the work.
If there's no interest in granting an easement, then there's no interest in going forward.
So we just want to make sure that.
Whether it's legal or not, if you have no stomach for it, then why waste everyone's time?
Why go through all the work?
We own both parcels.
If OLS doesn't agree to it, we got a problem already because the bridge got to come out.
Yeah.
And the walkway's got to come out.
Did we ask OLS about the bridge?
No.
No.
Nobody did. I mean, this is what happens when you have good people with good intentions to try to do good things, and they are doing good things. There's nothing wrong with what they have done. Unfortunately, all this kind of crap is getting in the way of trying to make both these entities work viably together cooperatively.
The library has never complained. The library has never complained about the bridge being there.
No, no.
They have no use. Let's, let's just look at this, and I'm going to say it right out loud. The library was concerned about their parking.
They were.
They did not want anyone to park in their park because they, that was their parking, and they needed the library patrons to use it. They were concerned because they were driving trucks and cars on the grass where they have a grove there and stuff. So what we're doing now is we're trying to solve everyone's problem. They never complained about the bridge, and that's on their property. I don't think there's going to be a problem.
No, I believe the library has great intentions.
Here's.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
We're in trouble because we already did it.
And we need to maintain.
I'm sorry, Counselor Burke has something to say, so.
I'm just going to make a motion that we authorize the town administrator and the solicitor to develop a plan regarding an easement over the library property at 34 Roosevelt to allow access from Roosevelt to Raymond Jones Memorial Dog Park. And the plan must be able to pass muster as it relates to bond payment issues so that we don't default and any other entity that may have to approve such an easement.
Second.
If you really think about it, we're still, they're still using our property for the drainage, where that's what it was allowed, that's what it was there for.
State agencies do funny things.
Yeah, they do.
As I'm sure Counselor Burke can attest to.
All right, so motions been made and seconded. All those in.
No comment.
All those in favor, yeah, don't say anything.
Can I just ask a question?
What?
And I, I'm in favor of that.
Jake, I'm sorry.
How many parking spaces are we looking at adding on?
I won't know.
Until we do the planning.
Still a little bit more clearing to do so that we got a good idea of what that looks like.
There'll be some, but the more, the more we can put there, the better, in my opinion. And then I also, I forgot to say this. Right now, the handicap parking lot, the handicap space is across the street, which is not really that much of a handicap. But I was thinking if we could put the, some parking spaces on that side of the road, it would be much easier for a handicapped person, except across the street the way they are.
So we're also going to be working on a couple of other things.
Right into the crosswalk, huh?
Yeah. We're going to go right into this crosswalk right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't know we were there. All right, I thought we were there already. Sorry.
No, 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 we are. Go ahead. Discussion.
So I was going to say, when Representative Edwards was out there, he said he would work with DOT to see if they can get us one of those flashing crosswalk signs. I'll have the DPW repaint the crosswalk areas, which is trying to make it more visible for people because it is pretty dark there, especially now daylight saving's gone. It's.
I think the flashing lights, the best.
They'd be helpful.
Just a question, the chiefs here. I think both are.
No, only.
No, they're both here.
They were.
I know there's some aversion to speed humps, but would that be a place that a speed hump would be problematic?
You mean like a table?
Speed table, speed hump, yeah. I know they're different things, but.
Our plows don't go up that high, though.
Thank you, and I like your word problematic, yes, because there's no plows, Mike. Anything on, even in the library parking lot itself, is a hiccup.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
They're also terrible for European cars.
Well, don't buy a European car.
The problem is that you damage them on our town property, then the town becomes liable.
All right. So there's no motion or anything. It's just a discussion on what we're going to do with the crosswalks. Acknowledged correction, Board of Canvases, the Republican C. 1114 2023, appointment of Nancy Driggs. Correct term ending from 1015 2024 would be 1015 2027. I need a motion for that.
This is, oh, anyone want an explanation?
Go ahead if you want.
So this was a charter issue. The, our charter says that no more than two Board of Canvases, Chris, can be up every two years. So we had to change the appointment date of one of them so that every, so we comply with the charter. Simply administrative correction.
Madam President, motion to do that thing.
Motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
You going to write that down? Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor. We're getting silly right now. Fire Chief Bailey, who's been here forever, discussion of possible vote to advertise request for proposal RFP for hiring consultant to update the town of Tiverton multi-hazard mitigation plan. Hello.
Hello.
So we actually got a grant from FEMA that's going to pay 90% of the cost.
Perfect.
We're estimating the project would be approximately $30,000 based on similar communities, and we'd like to go out for proposals.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
Madam President.
Yes.
Motion to advertise for the RFP for the consultant to update the Town of Tiverton's multi-hazard mitigation plan.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor? All right, and the next one is Fire Chief Bailey, approval of a budget transfer, $100,000 from account 3310-5101, personal service, services to account number 3310-5104 overtime. Any questions?
Madam President.
Yes.
Motion to grant the $100,000 transfer request from the chief.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I went really fast now. Administrator Carter, approval of budget transfer, $3,368.50 from account 2190-5268, active group health to account number 2190-7925, insurance, personal property, $2,422 from account 2190-5268, active group health to account 2190-7925, insurance, work, rent, comp. Any questions?
Madam President, motion to approve the transfers as requested by the administrator.
Second.
Motion been made.
Discussion?
Motion been made and seconded. Now discussion.
Yeah, sorry. Mr. Administrator, this is, is this for the prior fiscal year? We're just cleaning these up?
No, that's this year.
So we're going to...
New billings come in that were a little bit higher, I don't want to wait to spread it.
So the question I have for you is, since we're running, you know, currently at 101 and 102%, should we not look at transferring more dollars into these accounts to...
No, because they're one-time, according to the treasurer, I think we're one-time payments.
Okay, thank you.
So they should be done now.
All right, thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Administrator Carter, update on Rhode Island housing grants.
So we did get approval of both grants. The Rodanhausen has a municipal technical assistance grant program that was established after the speaker had adopted these housing changes to the state laws. So the first one would be for the technical ordinance rewrites that are going to be happening and the subdivision regulation rewrites.